Madam President, are you ready for me to call roll? Gloria Gonzalez Delacchia?
Here.
Anna Smith?
Here.
Christine Mauer?
Here.
Trish Bodie?
Here.
Shadai Fashakun?
Here.
Paul Gautier?
Here.
Francesca Romans?
Here.
All right, it is 6:17 and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. And we're going to start with our Pledge of Allegiance. It is my pleasure to welcome Cadet Temperance Winter of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge. Cadet Winter, a ninth grade student at Vista Ridge High School, is the daughter of Brandy and Kyle Winter, and an active member of the Lone Star Company's Junior Varsity Armed Drill Team. Cadet Winter takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer in Milburn Park and local adopt-the-road cleanups. Cadet Winter is also a physical fitness team leader who leads strength and conditioning training for ten cadets. Her commitment to service, sharp personal appearance, and exemplary conduct earned her the designation of Cadet of the Month for October 2023. Cadet Winter's performance and dedication were a vital part of the Lone Star Company's success, which resulted in her unit being ranked number one in the state of Texas. Her actions reflect most favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, her school, and Leander ISD. Well done, Cadet Winter. Thank you. Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas Pledge. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to each Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Now, we're going to move on to our spotlight on learning and hear about some of the great things happening at Bush Elementary School. Come on down.
Good evening, Dr. Gearing and board members. We're honored to be with you tonight. My name is Kim Grubb and I'm the proud principal of Laura Bush Elementary. So tonight, we are talking about what we're doing to address Goal Three, impactful family engagement. Specifically, key question 3.2, to what degree do our students and families feel welcome and have a sense of belonging in our school community? We know that a sense of belonging is so important for students to feel like they are part of something bigger than themselves so that they can focus on their learning and it helps them. And Laura Bush has a great culture already, but we're always looking to improve. And so this year, we are instituting our HOUSE system. And so the HOUSE system builds community and connection. Students know other students in their classroom, but it gives them an opportunity to know students vertically from kindergarten to fifth grade. And those relationships are built the whole time that they're in elementary school. But also, once they hit middle school, the students that have gone before them that have been in their house, they'll already know people when they get to middle school, so it's pretty exciting. I am joined by four students who will share more details with you, as well as parents who are new to Bush this year. And they're going to talk about how the HOUSE system has impacted their family. And I just want to mention that Ms. Bodie is repping her blue today. She joined the Blue House when she came to visit, so we're excited to have her. It was super cute when she was visiting classrooms. Students that were little tiny kinders would be like, "I'm in the Blue House." And so it was a real, it was a touching connection.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Malaya and I am in fifth grade. I'm in the Black House. I will be talking about what the HOUSE system is. The HOUSE system is a way to create a community in our school. Every student and staff member has been sorted into a house. There are all different grades in each house. Therefore, we can make long-term relationships with staff members and students from each grade. Each student will stay in their house from kindergarten to fifth grade. We will also have great leadership opportunities throughout our elementary school journey. What I like about the HOUSE system is that we do fun activities with our houses, like house lunches to bring us together. Many colleges use the HOUSE system to create a community for their students. Some of these include Dartmouth, Yale, Rice, and Princeton.
Hello, good evening. I'm Vihan from fourth grade and I'm in the Blue House to start. One of the many benefits of the HOUSE system is that you can be role models for younger kids in kindergarten and first grade. It can generate happiness and school spirit from all the fun stuff we do. Being in a house also gives opportunity to help little kids and grow in leadership skills. While making people happy, it also makes the infection that makes people laugh. For example, a shy kid can build up confidence by being among other kids who can make you feel invited and participate in group games. I think that it's the most beneficial because it can build long-lasting friendship between same or different grades. From a teacher's perspective, he or she can also feel involved in the fun activities and get introduced to kids from all grades. Lastly, my favorite thing about the HOUSE system is that you can do many fun things with people in different grades.
Good evening. I'm Anne. I'm in fourth grade and I'm in the Silver House. Today, I'm going to talk about how we are sorted into our house. We do it by going into the gym and reaching into a bucket full of colored slices of paper. Then, once you saw your colored paper, you'd run over to your house screaming, cheering, and shouting, but in joy, of course. We're never upset about what house we're in. It also doesn't matter what house your BFF is in because we're all friends. Plus, we'll make new ones. Next, I'm going to talk about what we do with our houses. Some things we do are house meetings, friendly competitions, high fives in the hallway, and house lunches. Yesterday, we had our first house lunch. Instead of sitting at our teacher's table, we sat with our houses. There are many things that I love about our HOUSE system, but this is my favorite. I love how it brings us together. It's like a huge family here at Laura Bush.
Good evening. My name is Samuel and I'm in the fifth grade and I'm also in the Silver House. I'm going to tell you about the houses we have and what the trait, color, and animal that represents it. First, we have the Blue House. The trait for the Blue House is integrity and the animal that represents it is the eagle. Now, we have the Red House and the trait for it is courage and the animal that represents it is the lion. Next, we have the Black House. The trait for the Black House is respect and the animal that represents it is the bear. Now, we have the Yelfa House. The trait for it is perseverance and the animal that represents it is the owl. Lastly, we have the Silver House. The trait for the Silver House is friendship and the animal that represents it is a wolf. And what I truly love about the HOUSE system is because it's a good way to make new friends.
Good evening. I'm the dad of Samuel Amsalu. And we're here with my wife, Eden Tasama, his mom, and my name is Dr. Amsalu Erko. This is our first year at Laura Bush Elementary and eleven years at the other Leander ISD schools. We are here to witness our unexpectedly wonderful experience since becoming part of Laura Welch Bush community. The commitment from the administrators, staff, teachers, and not only made us feel welcome, but has also contributed to our children's growth. One of the most significant impacts we have noticed is how it has helped our children to integrate into the school community. The support within this school has made our children feel like they belong here and enabling to become leaders in the school quickly. They have formed friendships that extend beyond their immediate classmates. We also want to express our thoughts on the HOUSE system and its positive impact on our children's experience. The concept of being part of the specific house has provided them with immediate sense of community and belongingness. We are proud to be part of it. It has been instrumental in the fostering and the feeling of belonging, especially during those initial months of navigating a new environment. Moreover, the values installed through the HOUSE system go beyond academics. It emphasizes teamwork, leadership, inclusivity, which are essential life skills. I have seen my children grow not just academically, but also in terms of character, confidence, all thanks to the nurturing environment created by the houses. Overall, Laura Bush Elementary has had a profound impact on our family's experience. We are genuinely grateful for the administration, the principal, Ms. Kim Grubb, counselor Christine Elzondo, and excellent teachers and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much. On behalf of myself, Michaela Sowers, Assistant Principal at Bush Elementary and our entire Laura Bush community, thank you for your time and your support as we become five houses, one home. We're going to take a quick photo with y'all before y'all leave. Thank you so much for being here. Definitely is always the highlight of our board meetings. Next, we're going to watch a video recognizing some of our incredible students and staff.
At LISD, we hope you have a wonderful fall break and are ready to tackle the rest of the semester. I'm Adav.
And I'm Aubrey. Let's finish 2023 strong.
As we march our way into the new year, several of the high school marching bands marched their way into history.
For the 6A UIL State Marching Band Championships, Vista Ridge High School took home fifth place and Vandegrift High School walked away the champions for the second year in a row.
The VHS drum majors told us that as they left the field after their performance, they knew that was the best show they put on. They weren't the only schools bringing home trophies.
Cedar Park High School won first place in the 5A Division. This was the Timber Wolf's band, fifth consecutive championship during 5A competition years. Also in 5A, Rouse placed second and Leander placed fifth. All schools brought incredible energy and stunned the crowd with their beautiful performances. Way to make LISD proud by showcasing the elite level of musical talent, drive, and dedication, as well as the friendship, care, and bond between bandmates.
From marching on the field to running on the course, LISD can't stop and won't stop achieving greatness. That was the mindset of the Vandegrift's Men Cross Country Team.
Earlier this month, the team placed second at the 6A UIL Cross Country Championships with a total score of 69, led by Hudson Haley, who raced to a second-place finish with a time of 15 minutes and 4 seconds. At the 5A level, Cedar Park's Isabel Conde D. Frankenberg placed second in the girls' race. Rouse's Edrin Rotiche placed third in the boys'.
As we celebrate these students who have worked hard to achieve so much in their respective fields, it's also important to show appreciation for the leaders behind the scenes who support the LISD students.
For American Education Week, some of our school principals wanted to share a special message with their leadership groups and brag about how they show their head, heart, and courage daily.
Hi, I'd like to give a shout out to Marty Johnson, the Assistant Principal at Reed Elementary. She shows heart every day by connecting with our students. Thank you for all you do. Happy American Education Week.
I'd like to send a special shout out to Assistant Principal Lauren Hauser for having the heart to carry our campus through all these changes and supporting me as a brand-new principal in our district. I'd also like to do a shout out to Amy Piveter, our second new AP that came to us from Round Rock ISD, having the courage to join a new district and open to those changes and supporting me as a new principal.
Hey, this is Paul Johnson. I want to give a shout out to the Vista Ridge High School Campus Leadership Team, all the Assistant Principals and the Dean of Instruction for constantly going above and beyond the call of duty to prepare students to be the best for the world. I want to thank you for your head, for your heart, your amazing diligence to make sure every student is cared for well every day. We see you. We appreciate you. Much gratitude. Great job. Go Rangers. Just want to give a shout out to our Cedar Park Middle School Leadership Team, all of our APs, our IC. You guys do a wonderful job serving our students and our staff every day. You're the reason that we have a great school. Go Leopards.
I'd love to recognize Robert Gillis, Assistant Principal at Leander Middle School. He's really been an anchor at LMS for six years, kind of Swiss Army Knife, does it all, takes care of everybody. The campus is really lucky to have him.
There's so much to celebrate at Leander ISD this year, and we still have a whole month left to show why we shine.
Always remember, there's no place like LISD.
So much to celebrate. Now, we're going to move to the citizen comments portion of our agenda. But before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we'll watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Ava.
And my name is Anusha, and we are in fifth grade at Tarvin Elementary.
The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren like my friends and I here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment.
The Board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire Leander ISD family is listening.
The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment.
To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read the guidelines specified in the Board Operating Procedures in the BED Local.
The Board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing this set when presenting complex information.
Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience.
Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime.
When the Board President calls, your number remembered. Watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Thank you. We're going to start with speaker number one. If speaker number one wants to come up to the podium.
Hello, my name is Carter Hope. I'm a current student at Vandegrift High School. I'm here today to talk about why I believe it is important to name the new Leander ISD Elementary School after Grayland Spring. As a current Vandegrift student, I know the importance of a school namesake. It gives the school an identity and something to be proud to represent. I personally know Matthew Vandegrift, but I respect him and look up to him as a role model and for the sacrifices he made for all of us. As a student, we were taught Matthew's values and to fight for what you believe in. Grayland Spring was a person who won a good student, a good teammate, treated all his teachers, coaches, and staff with the highest back. The students that will be lucky enough to attend Grayland Spring Elementary will have an amazing role model at such a critical time, at the start of their educational journey. I was personally touched by Grayland as he was my brother's best friend. I looked up to him as much as my brother did. It will make a positive impact on the rest of my life. Imagine the impact he can continue to make after he leaves those elementary students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number two.
Hi, my name is Allison Baskin. I'm sure y'all have seen my name a few times. I had a whole thing planned to come say tonight, but I realized when I got here, what I really want to say is, in regards to rezoning, I understand that with growth, there are going to be compromises everywhere. And you can't please everyone. But I would really like to see moving forward, more effort to focus on the emotional and mental health of our children. More focus on that as opposed to funding and optics and how processes are typically done. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number two. Speaker number three, if you could come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is McKenna Burke. First, I just wanted to thank the board members who have come to all of these elementary school rezoning meetings recently. I know it's taken a lot of your time. It's taken a lot of ours as well. I'd like to voice concern today, again, piggybacking off of Allison's comments about the mental health of our children in the entire district. We live in one of the largest districts in Austin area. We have seen tremendous growth. Elementary, oh, we're kind of cutting out. Sorry, guys. Okay, I came involved in elementary school discussion. Use that one instead. Use that one instead. I became. I can't talk too much this week. I'm done. That's funny. I wonder if it's just worse. Can you hear me now, maybe? Okay, I won't make overpromise. It's like reception with your phone, right? So I became. Okay, just not use that one. Alright, I'm going to come stand here. I've been involved in the elementary school discussion due to my children being asked to move schools again, making it three schools in four years. I saw how traumatic this was for my children the first time and started researching. As a nurse pursuing my nurse practitioner degree, I've been trained to follow the evidence and research. What I found was shocking. A recent academic review in 2016 highlights multiple studies that list changing schools as a risk factor for learning difficulties, academic underperformance, social exclusion, and increased rates of psychiatric symptoms. As you can see from those sweet children today, when you create a community, you really create a family. Another study by Temple and Reynolds showed that children who moved two, two times or more in their elementary school career has decreased achievement in math and reading at the end of grade seven. This research was all compiled before COVID and without additional trauma. I can only imagine how much greater the effect is on our children being required to move so frequently now. My proposal to you is that we form a committee with the purpose of creating a rezoning policy in L I S D to ensure the health and safety of all of our district's children. This committee should not only include members from the district and board, but should include mental health professionals and healthcare professionals. This policy created must be backed by clinical evidence to give our children the best opportunity possible. In line with the L I S D vision of each and every student is at the heart of our decisions, this requires a focus on students and all elements to impact their overall student experience in order for them to reach their maximum potential. Thank you.
Thank you, and sorry for the technical difficulties there. Speaker number four, if you'd come to the podium.
Maybe not? There we go. Okay. Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Wesley Alsop. I am here to expand upon my original nomination of Beverly Alsop for the naming of E S number 30. In my nomination, I wrote, I, let me skip. Here we go. Yes, yes. Okay, in my nomination, I wrote about her battle with breast cancer and how she flipped the script focusing on awareness. Representing L I S D, she built the largest race team for Austin Susan Coman Race for the Cure, a title that L I S D held for a decade. In 2018, when celebrating her retirement, she had a chance to meet with Trish and other, other trustees, and she provided this quote. "My favorite memory is having the support of the entire district and helping me organize the largest team in Coman Race for the Cure. My battle with breast cancer became a family affair, and that family was Leander I S D. From the superintendent, administration, teachers, and the tech department, I knew I had the backing of the whole district. This is one of the proudest moments of her life, not because of the battle or the victory, but because she spread awareness to hundreds of L I S D employees who carried that torch and created teams of their own. Now, I believe if given the opportunity to have her namesake represented by E S number 30, her perseverance to fight for a cause and to spread that fight will inspire so many others to do the same. Thank you."
Thank you. Speaker number five contacted us. They weren't here. Just want to confirm that before I move. Okay, speaker number six, come on up to the podium.
Hello. Thanks. I didn't know if it was on. Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Julie Walkie. We have known the Spring family for over 16 years. My son Jack, who grew up in L I S D, was a close friend and fellow athlete of Grayland's. We strongly feel that Grayland personifies all the exemplary qualities that warrant the new elementary school to be named after him. My son currently plays football out of state, so he can't be here tonight, but I would like to share some of his thoughts as soon as he found out what happened that day. On a side note, I did send a video for my son to the board. Grayland, you are everything that I aspire to be. Your infectious personality, your beautiful optimism, and pure soul are a rare combination of qualities that very few people have. If I can impact the people in my life half as much as you impacted me, I'll be the biggest influence in the world. All I want to do is throw you one more pass or go on one more adventure with you. I can't even put into words how upset I am that I can't create any more memories with you, but I am beyond blessed to have had so many already. A piece of the world died, not just a person. I promise, as I chase my dreams and go on my journey of life, I will do it in your honor. I know I can't be successful by myself, but knowing you're watching over me when I can't even walk, I know you'll make me fly. I promise your legacy will never die." These words from a young college student are just one more illustration of how amazing Grayland was and how he affected all those who were fortunate enough to know him and be around him. We strongly encourage you to please consider naming the newest elementary after such a fine young man. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is speaker number seven.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Lavelle, and I'm the mother of two young boys, one of whom will be entering kindergarten and L I S D next year. I also work in the disability space, including in the areas of adult and children's mental health. My comments today will focus on consent agenda item 5E regarding policies around bringing volunteer chaplains onto L I S D campuses. I'm in full support of the proposed resolution that will prevent campuses from allowing chaplains to provide any mental health services to students. Our world's polarized, and I expect that the experiences my children will have to navigate in school will be much more serious than the ones that I did. School-based mental health providers play a critical role in helping students navigate their emotions, relationships, and dreams. A role whose importance is recognized by the state via licensure and certification requirements. Chaplains do not possess the skills or experience necessary to provide mental health services to children, nor should they be expected to. Chaplains play an important role in the religious community, but this does not and should not extend to our schools. As a parent, it is my right and responsibility to direct how my children are exposed to religion. My family is interfaith, and bringing clergy on campus to provide services of any kind could confuse my kids in the best case and alienate them in the worst. I strongly support the board's proposed resolution as written and hope that you will adopt it this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide input on this very important topic.
Thank you. Next speaker is speaker number eight.
Is it on? Very good. Good evening. Dr. Garing and school board members, I want to thank you for your time tonight. I just wanted to be brief. Thirty-four years in education, recently retired, nine years at the U I L. I wanted to tell you that my name is Tracy Neely, and I'm here to support the Spring Elementary naming. I have so many years of experience watching kids being different, different things at different schools, and empowering a school with a name can be extremely beneficial. You've got a Grayland Spring character, and I can tell you that many educators, we see it as the it factor. He kind of showed, he was a shining star from the inside. And I think naming an elementary in honor of him would be a, a good thing for Leander. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that mic's throwing everyone off tonight. Thank you. Right. Thank you. Our next speaker is speaker number nine.
Is this on now? Okay, hello, I'm Thomas Taylor. I recently moved here from Odessa, Texas. Grayland Paul Spring was the first individual that I met from the high school area here when I went to the state football championships, which would have been, I guess, a year ago next, uh, next Friday. I wish we could have celebrated that. The night I met him, he walked across the room to me and stuck out his hand and said, "I've heard a lot of really good things about you. We really would like to make you feel welcome here, and I'm very glad to meet you." And I thought to myself, wow, I really should be a big guy in this community. And then I saw him walk to the next person and say the same thing to them, because he wanted to make every person in the room feel included. And that's the thing that I walked away from there with, and I said, you know, not very many people go out of their way to make every person they meet feel good about themselves. And, you know, the fact that he said, "Welcome, we're glad you're here." How would you like to have a school that made people come to it and say, "I'm glad I'm here"? And the people that are there say, "Welcome, we're glad you're here." I think you've got the perfect opportunity to have a, a great school named after a great individual. And I think if you'll look in your heart, you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to speaker number 10.
Probably helps to turn it on. My name is Randall Little. I come to you on the rezoning issue. We are, currently I have a daughter, first grade, in North Elementary. She's been there from the beginning. They have built a incredible school. And having heard that they have, and seen that we have become the, basically the bastard children of the district, it feels like, getting shuffled here, there, and everywhere, and facing once again getting shuffled and sent even further away from people close to us that we could make friends with and have. I ask that y'all please consider that before you decide to, once again, move Summerlin in the 1100 area of the district to a new school. They have built an incredible school in North Elementary, and having watched the Bush Elementary speak about the colors, Summerlin don't get colors. We get thrown around. So don't do it anymore, please. That's all we ask. We've been misinformed throughout this process. As far as we were told that, oh, we've been looking 10 years out. I'm sorry, give me a few moments. I'll be quick. That's not the case, because overcrowding isn't a problem at North Elementary. And if you were looking 10.
Thank you for your comments, sir. I appreciate it. Our next speaker is speaker number 11.
Can you hear me? Is this thing on? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Good evening, board. My name is Garrison Spring, and I wanted to speak on behalf of our family, the Spring family, and my late brother Grayland Spring, as he is nominated to be named after a new school. First and foremost, we're beyond grateful that he was even nominated. But we don't feel like he deserves a school because he has passed away per se, but because he exemplified what a true L I S D student who mastered the ideal profile from elementary to graduating high school is who he is. He would give other kids an ideal image of what to live up to. Myself and my two other brothers went to Laura Bush Elementary and then on to Vandegrift High School. Both schools being named after someone who exemplified what it means to be a great role model and a leader. This gave us a feeling of self-worth and a purpose, and that we were working towards something bigger than ourselves. What students need now more than ever is someone to look up to, who exemplifies what being an L I S D student means, and a person who will give those students, regardless of age, someone to admire and something bigger to strive for. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is speaker number 12.
Hi, is it on? My name is Jane Russell, and my family has submitted my grandmother's name, nominated her. Her name is Anna Rae Barho for the new school. She was a lifelong resident of Leander. She was born on July 12, 1908, and died on February 27, 2014, at the, at the age of 105 years young. She learned to play the piano at the age of six, and she played, started playing the piano in her church, the Leander Presbyterian Church, at 13. She played the piano every Sunday and rarely missed a Sunday. She went to school in Leander, and that was when they only had 10 grades, and she graduated from Leander. She graduated in 1925 with five girls and four boys in her class. Her favorite subjects were spelling and math. She said she didn't really like history very much, which was kind of funny, because she remembered when the first car came to Leander, the first airplane landed in the field behind their house, and she remembered when the electricity was turned on in 1939. After graduating from Leander, students could pay to attend Liberty Teacher and Business College in Liberty Hill, Texas for an additional two years, and that was considered a junior college. Out of 34 of her descendants, 26 attended or attend Leander I S D. My grandmother led an extraordinary life, and she thought that education was very important. She's had many newspaper articles written on her, and was on the news many times in Leander. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is speaker number 13.
Alright, good evening, everybody. Thank you to the board again for your service. I don't think it gets said often enough. I'm here to express concerns with E S 30 rezoning and draw attention to three issues with scenario three. The first is capacity. After scenario two, the North staff rearranged the rooms to find space, which I appreciate, but what effects will that have on the quality of student experience and the free and appropriate public education for the students at North? Next, scenario three, still exceeds that newly increased capacity. And last, scenario three claims that building a new E S 33 will relieve North, but the last bond only enabled a new E S 32, not E S 33, and the district does not own any land for E S 33. The four neighboring neighborhoods that make up North who want to be good partners, but we're asking the board for another scenario that focuses on keeping capacity at or below 100% doesn't pass the buck on to the teachers and staff to exceed our facilities and focuses our projections on only opening E S 31 and 32, since these are the only new schools the last bond allows. I want to thank you again for including the public in your process when you work through the overcrowding issues.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to speaker 14.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Andrea Chevalier, and I'm a parent of a child in the early learning program here in Leander I S D. We love Leander I S D, and we hope both of our children will graduate from this school district. So thank you for all of your leadership. I am here tonight because I feel very strongly about the item on the agenda related to chaplains and their ability to provide counseling services or programs to students in the school district. I'm in support of the resolution that's on the agenda. I believe it's my role as the parent to impart religious beliefs and share my, my religious background with my children. I think that that should be in my parental control, and I don't approve of my tax dollars being used for that purpose in the school district. So I support the resolution that y'all have, and thank you. I look forward to it being approved.
Thank you. Our final speaker, speaker five, sorry, final speaker, 15.
Thank you. I want to echo the comments from the previous speakers about professionals being counselors, school counselors. That's very, very important. But I also want to tie that in. I know that there's some concern on expense of Leander having its own, having its own police force. its own police force. But if we're going to have professional counselors, we absolutely have to have professionals having guns in our schools. So I hope that that resolution will be adopted and approved. Unfortunately, Livaldi was totally mishandled, and our state legislature has mishandled this issue by passing this legislation and not giving school districts the money that it will take to do this. But fortunately, Leander will be able to do this, and I totally support a school police force. I also want to reach out to people that are LGBTQ+, and anyone that's different. Holidays can be a stressful time, but if you're LGBTQ+ or if you're different, have a wonderful holiday time and know that it gets better. It will get better. You will move on, and you will do incredible, great things. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Speaker 15. That concludes our citizen comments, and next, we're going to move right on to our consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I second.
I would like to pull some things out.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any comment?
Yes, I would like to pull out of the agenda, the chaplains and also the police. I'd like to talk about that before we vote on it.
We have a motion to approve and a second, so we have to vote on that first. All those in favor of moving, wait.
Well, question, clarification. The consent agenda that's in front of us right now, that we're getting ready to vote on, when we vote on this consent agenda, I'm under the impression for process that if we have a revised resolution here, it does appear in our minutes. Is that correct? I want, I have a question about process as we get ready to approve a consent agenda. Just want to make sure for process that we're all on the same page, that when we have a revised resolution, if we adopt a revised resolution that's on the consent agenda, that that does appear in our minutes.
So what is in your board packet is what you would be adopting if you're adopting this board resolution?
So if there's two resolutions in there, I just want to know the revised one is what we're adopting, if I'm voting on that.
Let me take a look at that.
Five C and five E.
So there's a resolution, and then there's a revised resolution. So if they vote on the consent agenda, then the question is, is the revised resolution the one that is adopted? Gotcha.
So it is the revised resolution that's placed in there. If this motion passes, then it's our revised resolution that we see in five C that is adopted?
Correct.
Good question, Trish.
Yeah, I have no questions about the item. I just want to make sure I knew the process of what we're voting on, and what is up in our minutes.
Right. We're, I was consulting with Bruce and our board attorney right now to follow parliamentary procedure. Since we have a motion and a second, we have to vote on this motion, correct?
Right. That was the motion that was made, was seconded.
I'm not withdrawing my motion. I'm not.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Six in favor. Any opposed? One opposed. Motion passes. And next, we're going to move to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. As most of you know, we had a great celebration in the last week or so, as we had a visit from the College Board in the district. Mr. Johnson did a great job of showcasing the district to the College Board as well as our kids. They toured almost all of our campuses at the high school level to celebrate and showcase the advanced placement program in the district. So we'll come back to that in just a little bit. I do want to highlight the high school deans of instruction as part of our empowered staff portion. I'm going to come back to them again later as well as part of the College Board visit, but when we talk about empowered staff, we're not just talking about teachers or coaches or folks that are in direct contact with kids, because sometimes the empowerment comes from folks who are in support roles. And our deans of instruction at the high school level are these kinds of folks, and so they do a lot of work inside the College Board AP program specifically, that we'll talk about a little bit later today. I want to point us back quickly to one of our four guiding documents, the graduate profile, and just highlight what those four traits are that we're really looking to develop in our students in Leander ISD as we go through their pre-K12 careers. We really are working to create critical and creative thinkers, skilled communicators and collaborators, and at the same time, humans who are compassionate and who are giving back to the community. And then we really want them also to be adaptable. That's really important, I believe, in our rapidly changing world, and to really be reflective about their own learning and take lots of ownership for their own learning. I want to tell you a quick story about an experience that I had today at Norman Elementary School in a fourth grade writing class that I think exemplifies a couple of things that are in the graduate profile. And so we talk a lot about connecting students, if we go back to this graduate profile, in adaptable and reflective individual section, connecting students to their interests and their passions. And it was fascinating in this writing class, as the teacher was working with the students, they were talking about persuasive and opinion writing that they'd done before, and now trying to transfer that really to a different level. And one of the students gave a great example of his Pokemon cards and went into quite some detail about why that was important to him and why he could persuade other kids that Pokemon was important too. And immediately, the teacher came back to the student with, "I love the fact that you're passionate and interested in Pokemon," and listed all the things, like, "These are the facts that you provided, and look how great that is for an opinion piece. Here's how you could persuade," really affirmed that student. And then she followed up with this. She said, "But I want you to now think about some other things that are, affect the world that we live in more and that affect people outside of yourself." And that was so powerful for me, because now she pushed that kid not only to interest and passions in myself, but to, "How do I become a compassionate community contributor, and how do I care about others outside of myself?" And it's in those little moments in the district that we see the development of each and every one of our students in all of these areas of the graduate profile. And so I just wanted to share that little story with you about what's important as we go through our day-to-day experience, student experience, in our schools and in our classrooms. So let's jump into empowered learners a little bit, and I want to point out the reasons that the College Board came to visit the district. And if you were at the event, then you saw some of this, but I do want to just highlight some of these areas as we go. We have over, almost 6,500 students currently enrolled in AP classes in over 13,000 AP courses. We offer 31 AP courses across the district with 177 teachers. And what's really special about our district is that out of that 177 teachers, 38 of them are AP exam readers. That means that they go away in the summer and they score AP exams. That gives them a level of professional development in AP classes that a lot of other teachers don't, don't get. As we look at our participation, we can see that we've had this huge jump in participation over the last year, and included in that jump in participation is a jump in the number of students who are scoring a three or higher on these AP tests. And that is what College Board clearly said made us stand out from every other high school district in the nation. Not only are we encouraging more students to take tests, especially students who are traditionally marginalized, but we're also helping more of those students to perform on these tests. And so you can see some of the awards that our students are achieving. These awards are given for students who are taking multiple AP tests and doing very well on them. The capstone and seven iron research certificates are new relatively in the district, but we already have a significant number of students participating in those as well. And this really tells the story of the progress of our district since 2008, '09, when we had 2,500 AP exams given, all the way to now over 10,000 exams given in this last school year. And you can see that we've steadily increased our performance at the same time. Avid is a program that is used in a number of our high schools in the district, but very strongly used specifically at Vista Ridge High School, and they are a national recognition site for Avid. And you can see that those students are doing even better on those AP tests. You want to correct me, PJ? At national, national what? National Demonstration District Site High School. Thank you. I'm so glad you're here tonight. All right. So over, over that period of time since 2008, we've seen a doubling in our high school enrollment, but a four times increase in those number of exams given, and then, of course, you can see the jump in performances as well. So again, a lot of this work is attributed to our deans of instruction, who work very closely with our students and our staff in the College Board AP program, and continue to do that excellent work. We want to recognize them. We want to shout out to them. We want to thank them for their dedication to the district. We also have a set of students who are AP ambassadors, and these are students that are selling these programs to other students in their high schools. And of course, that's a much more powerful sell than a teacher could ever be, is when you hear that from other students. So moving on to more student empowerment, we are very excited about our Early College High School, which is out on the San Gabriel campus of ACC, and they are getting ready to start enrolling year three of enrollment for the Early College High School. Currently, they have sophomores and freshmen, and of course, next year we'll add a new freshman class, so we'll be have freshmen, sophomores, and juniors next year. They will be moving out of the permanent building at ACC to a set of Leander ISD portables on that same site, as we get, as we prepare to design the new building that will hopefully one day be standing on that ACC campus. But the applications have opened for Early College High School for 2024, '25, and those applications will remain open until March 8. We wanted to highlight the Bond Project website that is now up and live and running. We've done some exceptional work with our facilities program and SCR to make sure that we get the website up and running, and you can feel free to visit and see all of the information that's up there. It tracks our new 2023 bond and all of the projects that are related to that. Of particular interest right now, Elementary School 30 and Leander High School master plan redesign, because those projects are the furthest along, and so there's the most data that you can find on those particular webpages. But we do encourage you to go and look at that, and then pass along any questions that you have, any comments for improvement, or any thoughts that you have about what we could do differently there. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just wanted to go back to the graduate profile that you were showing us with students. And I think that's just such a, what you pulled out there, I just wanted to affirm that I'm seeing that, we talk about defined autonomy. Defined is the graduate profile. I'm seeing these are the directions we want our kiddos to head into, but the autonomy is how it is manifesting on different campuses looks different. And so, for example, when I was at Bush Elementary School, we walked into a first, first grade classroom, and the teacher had the kiddo sitting down, and they were talking about these four components and where they are seeing it in their classroom. So to have your first graders talking about, "Oh, yeah, when, when she easily moved around and could change things up," she was an adaptive and reflective individual. So it was, it was very, very cool to see this happening on, on the campus. And then to hear your example, I'm like, yes, this is, this is what we've been talking about as a board level. There were setting these goals, we're setting these aspirations, the vision of where we want to get to. It might look different on the campus. They're doing what matches their community, but we're seeing it happen. And so I just wanted to affirm, and I loved your story, that helped bring it more to illustration for me.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Garing? All right. We're going to change up the order a little bit, because we have a guest presenter with us this evening, so we're going to start with 7B1, our legislative committee update. And Mr. Colby Nichols is going to join us.
Good evening. How are y'all? Well, we had an interesting vote on November 17th that I think most of you are probably aware of. I'm going to talk a little bit about House Bill 1 and also House Bill 2. House Bill 1, which was the big omnibus school finance bill, which included ESAs, as most of you are aware now, actually was sent back to committee. I'm not going to say it was defeated. It was sent back to committee, because John Rainey out of College Station offered an amendment to essentially strip out the ESAs. On that amendment, they took a vote. There were 21 Republicans that voted for the amendment. There were 63 Democrats that also voted for that amendment. I think of note, something I wanted to point out, of those 21, and again, you may remember from the general session, there were 24. So there were three votes that dropped off there. Of those 21, five have already offered up their retirement. That's Kyle Casell out of College Station, Ed Thompson out of Pearland, John Rainey out of College Station, Bryan Area, Four Price out of Amarillo, and then Andy Mur out of Junction. So those five folks won't be coming back out of those 21. As I mentioned, the bill was sent back to committee. It was recommitted, but there doesn't seem to be any desire to, to hash that back out. That being said, it's unclear whether the governor is actually going to call us back or not, but I will say, here in recent days, he's begun making endorsements of Republicans in the primary against those Republicans that actually voted for the Rainey amendment. So that could indicate potentially that we could be moving into that next latter stage of political primary season. I do want to talk very briefly about HJR 1 and House Bill 2, and I can't remember if we touched on this last time, but essentially, it creates a new constitutional fund, $1.1 billion per year that would come every year, whether the legislature appropriates it or not, via that, that constitutional provision, obviously would have to be voted on. It would create a .1 ADA factor. Essentially, it would be $200,000 for every district or campus that has over 2,000 kids. And there's a sliding scale there, but obviously, that's of note. This was, both of these passed pretty unanimously. I think it was 145 to 3 was the, the final vote count on that. It has been sitting at the Senate for 11 days now and counting. I do think, and I don't have a problem saying this at this point, because it's starting to get reported in the media, I do think tomorrow, the Senate's going to come in- to get reported in the media, I do think tomorrow, the Senate's going to come in and you could potentially see some action on school safety. I don't know that it will be on these pieces of legislation. So that's something to watch out for tomorrow. In terms of where we go next, that is a good question. As I mentioned, we don't know whether we're going to get called back in or if this is moving more into the political season. But for your committee and for your school board, obviously, the discussions of what comes next session, regular session, where are the needs for the community, I think that has to start and already has started now. So, any questions?
Colby, thank you so much. Part of the Legislative Committee update, just to say that our Legislative Committee has been very busy. We're, we're meeting with you a lot. But I'd like to clarify, if HB 1 had continued its journey, even with the ESA removed, just for, so we're all on the same page, we still had concerns because funding wasn't going straight into basic allotment. Funding was getting unusual type ties into it. There were a lot of questions. We had started talking about an amendment package of things because we really wanted to have a good conversation about school finance, and we felt that we didn't get that. Am I clear on that? And am I missing anything on that?
No, I, I think you're exactly right. And I think it's safe to say that that package, although it would have left the House with the ESA, would not have been the same package coming back from the Senate. It's just impossible. It's too complex. It's too much. So, and there's a lot of political arguments there to be made. But yeah, obviously, you know, special ed being one specific example that you as a committee have discussed over and over again, and the delta of state funding versus what locally you have to come up with. You know, that was one big issue that we identified early. But just like anything with school finance, there's so many moving parts that there's no way we would have come to a, a clear conclusion until we got closer to the end of the process.
Well, thank you. And, you know, I think as a board adopting our resolutions, we're all clear on what our next steps look like in that special session. The priorities were clear. I dropped off our priorities and our resolutionist packs a few times. And just for the engagement level, I really appreciate that. And Anna, you even got to the front row seat, seeing our students get engaged.
Yes, I wanted to say thank you to our Legislative Committee, but also Ms. Waltman out there for helping us arrange a student at the Capitol to advocate. Isaac was at the Capitol on Tuesday, what, two weeks ago, right before break. And what was amazing is we had a student from Leander ISD speak about their, about their experience in special education, but how powerful and how rewarding it was to use their public schools to get what they needed. And it was probably the best thing I have seen in a long time because legislators don't care what I have to say. They really don't. They want to hear students. And to be able to hear a student who is impacted by our local school system and the experiences and the most, and how our district has set them up, it was just such a great thing. But I also wanted to say what I loved about that day is you had parents, students, disability groups, and trustees come together. And those in the disability world know that doesn't ever happen. So it was a pretty amazing thing to see these entities come together and fight for public education.
And two more dates to keep in mind. December 7th is the end of this fourth special session, so we'll obviously know more by then, whether we're going to be coming back or not. And then December 11th is candidate filing deadline for primaries. And again, I think you're going to continue to see some move, some movement. I don't know if you'll see more retirements or anything of that nature, but I think obviously you're going to see some more political movement there. Anything else?
Just want to thank you for meeting with us. And, you know, this committee met frequently, and our, our driver was those legislative priorities. And one of those foremost being our opposition as a board to vouchers. And, and you helping us with that voice and us, you know, just being present and talking to our elected officials about protecting public education, not only in Leander ISD, but the state of Texas. So thank you.
No, thank you. And if I don't see you before then, everyone have a Merry Christmas.
I would like to say something because I'm actually a fan of the idea of protecting public education as well. And I think, and this is thinking a little outside the box, to actually protect public education, we need school choice and the vouchers. This group has to let go of the illusion of control. Not everyone is happy with what we're doing. Not everyone is content with the status quo. And the more you hold people back, the more people will do something different. And they're already doing it.
Thank you. And I'm sure as the one school board member whose children all go to private school, that coupon, that discount would be wonderful for you. Here, we're advocating for every single student in Leander ISD and in public education. Maybe if my kids went to private school, I would want that coupon too. But we're here as elected officials representing public schools and what's best for public schools.
It's not about the coupon. It's about having a choice. When you try to tell someone, you have to love me, the more you say it, the more they will run away.
Okay, Paul, thank you.
It's not about that.
Thank you. But we are a public school entity.
We are a public school entity.
Right. Actions speak louder than words. And that's all I'm going to say.
That is right.
My kids are a proud public school. I'm so proud that they're in public school, and that's why I sit on this board. But we hear you, but you know what? We have board priorities, and our priorities passed, even though you didn't vote against, you voted against them. We are still here.
Was that a legal vote?
All right, I'm done.
Dissent agendas are supposed to be unanimous.
Thank you, Colby.
Thank you, Colby.
Now, we're going to jump back in our, our agenda order for tonight. And so we're going to move to 7A2, which is our impactful family engagement formative
Good evening, Madam President. Order Trustees, Dr. Garing. Thank you for being here tonight. We are here to talk to you about impactful family engagement and give you a progress update on that. I am Angela Hodges, Area Superintendent for Leander ISD, and I'm here with Christina Hardy and Colleen Brighton. We're going to just give you a quick update. So the slide we know and love, just a reminder about our system alignment, always starts with our community-based accountability system, making sure that we start with the hopes and dreams of our community, which always launches into our five-year strategic plan. We're going to talk about the district improvement plan, which is our one-year cycle of that five-year plan. And then, of course, I know that you guys have an agenda item tonight to talk about the superintendent evaluation, which is rooted in this system alignment. And again, tonight, we're going to focus just on that goal of impactful family engagement and give you a progress update on that. So with that, we'll move over to Christina.
All right. So you have listed it here as our goal is defined by the strategic plan to engage our diverse community by fostering positive relationships through reciprocal communication and collaboration. And the desired impact will be that students, we provide student support for academic and social and emotional success through strong schools, family, and community partnerships. Our system response is to review and redesign systems to improve trust, mutual respect, and shared responsibility, as well as improve processes for reciprocal communication at all levels and to all audiences. So I'm going to refresh our memory with our wonderful Forest of Engagement. This was something that we presented last year, something, our vibrant, vibrant Forest of Engagement, where we created a baseline and assessed what we're doing across the district to support impactful family engagement. We looked at how we cultivate trust among our parents, staff, and community partners, and our ambassadors, to produce that tree right there in the middle, can't lose sight of the tree. Those are our students, and those are the most sought-after creators of our future world. We're hoping that we can accomplish that goal through that support system that we create around them. So we are doing a lot of things, but are we making these engagement opportunities meaningful? Are people connecting the dots to how the whole system is designed to support empowered student learners? Are we creating an educational ecosystem where families are not just passive observers, but active partners in their child's education? So this, again, this forest recognizes the essential role that families play in a student's academic journey and aims to harness the involvement for the betterment of that child's learning experience. So I'm, we brought up a couple of different examples of how we're building systems to improve trust, mutual respect, and shared responsibility. And I think nothing defines it more, nothing defines it better than the, the evolution of our long-range plan and, and the committee that it created. So I, going back to the, the roots of this during the bond, our election bond for 2023, funding was included for the long-range plan and the consideration of repurposing facilities. We heard from our community loud and clear that they wanted to be a part of that process, which led to a hard pivot and reconsideration of the plan and, and a vow to our people that we would create more community engagement in that process. So if you take a look at the roadmap, we started with the bond, the communication in that bond, which led to a long-range planned community forum. And through that engagement, and, and no one says any of this stuff is going to be pretty, but the outcome, I do believe, you couldn't have asked for it. It was unexpected, but, but eventually, we, it led us to the Long Range Planning Committee. And it's another committee that involves not just, not just parents, but also parents, teachers, staff, and students, and board members. And now that Long Range Planning Committee consists of subcommittees, they're taking a deep dive into schools of choice, repurposing, and modified utilization, and community conversations. So again, just one example of how we're building systems. And another one that I wanted to talk about today was what we're doing with Leadership LISD. This is a system that we revived and helped to offer that openness and transparency within the district, which included invitation to our businesses to partner, to share more about what they do as we share more with them about what we do. And while we have launched our new class last year, what's exciting is, is that we now have our first group of ambassadors. Now, this has been a lot of fun. These conversations are rich and authentic. They're, they're genuine and sincere. You see how much they're, the context of what we do here in Leander ISD has created a sense of curiosity and a sense of ownership of what we do here in the district. And so now, many are serving on different committees. They're trying to find ways to get deeply involved and in creating connections to businesses and cultural and civic groups.
All right. And so in this system response, we're really talking about improving trust, mutual respect, and shared responsibility. And the focus here is really going to be on our campus and parent involvement. And so we actually have a strategy that specifically states that we want to develop a process to evaluate the practices and perceptions about family engagement at the campus level to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our families and students. So one area that we've been talking about is really about parents and families being able to access their campus during the school day. Volunteering, coming to be a part of lunches, all of those different things, right? So we know that every campus has a different way that they go about doing this. And so we, our goal really is about understanding all of those different ways. We also know and understand that security is something that we have to be realistic about. And so we have campus leaders that very realistically understand that they need to keep their campus secure. And we also have a large percentage of campus leaders that are new since COVID. And we all know what COVID did to family access on a campus during a school day. And so what are we doing to make sure that we kind of get a baseline of where we are with our campus processes so that we can calibrate and then get our leaders together to talk about that? So what is working for you? What is not working for you? What practices yields the most family involvement and makes everybody feel safe at the same time? These are, we're right at the baseline of all of this right now. These are conversations we're going to want to start having with our leaders this school year. And so you will see on our tree, we have all different types of ways that we're currently already engaging our families, but we know that this is a continuous improvement area for us. So we want to make sure that we just understand the current reality in as many contexts as possible to engage our families. So a couple of things that we'll just brag on, of course, we have great partnerships across the district with our PTA. Stay and Play was a really fun one that I got recommended from over here.
Parents, teachers?
Thank you. I lost it. Parents and teachers. And what they do is they have families come in and they take parenting classes, and they, they can just be a part of the school day with them. And it's just something that's already happening. So how do we replicate some of those things across all of our campuses in a way that makes everybody feel okay and safe to do so?
So moving on, we are moving into reciprocal communication. How are we improving processes at all levels and to all audiences? So again, just resurrecting a slide that we used last year when we did an audit of our communication tools. As we began to study their effectiveness, we realized we need some improvement in order to create a collective voice. So speaking specifically to our social channels, how do we align these specific communication tools to increase audience reach and engagement? But also, what kind of tools are we using to build bridges to our communities, to our diverse communities, to people without ties to Leander ISD? And so that led us to this journey. We're, we're looking at some things old, some things new, specifically when we look at our social media tools. During the summer and throughout this year, SCR is making a concerted effort to establish continuity across district social media profiles, and then also simplify the process for granting or transferring social media access when necessary. So this is a collaborative effort that we, that has involved campuses. This is to create more alignment with our social media tools and that presence. So this process helps us to seamlessly integrate communication, marketing, and branding efforts, as well as help us create and implement a long-term strategy that builds audience and community. So ultimately, we want to create standards and best practices that give campuses ideas and strategies around their social presence. Since we started this process, we're about halfway through. And I have to tell you, we, while there's been a lot of folks who have not really wanted to dive into the social media space, you'd be surprised by how many campuses have done it and done it extraordinarily well. And so what we're doing is creating that, the, the foundation of what makes social media practices strong and, and what those, what that content looks like. And we're seeing them really take off with it. And then, again, creating that alignment, we are building more content, but allowing our campuses also to have their own brand of content, as well as the district providing its own set of material as well. So also, we wanted to take a look at rebooting our longstanding tools. We experienced, we experimented with mailers and postcards and printed assets during the elections. That was very, that was really highly effective for us in terms of what that outreach looks like. Going back to basics with the printed material, going back to what snail mail looks like, this has helped really create community awareness. And it's something we needed to do more consistently. And more than just when we want to ask voters to consider a bond, a bond and vote. And so now, we're taking a look at how do we consistently educate our community about who we are? It seems odd that when we, I moved here 20 years ago, and I have to educate folks about who Leander ISD is because that's why I moved out here. And that's not the case anymore. Now you have folks that have no ties to the district, as well as an aging community that doesn't have that connection and familiarity anymore. And so this is, this is an exciting time to, again, use an old-timed, age-true tool like printed material, again, to help get us, help get our message out. And we'll continue to look at different ways to use those tools effectively. But I'm excited about what we're going to do through this effort.
So I am going to talk a little bit about where the community partnerships come into family engagement. And I love this slide because if you think of LISD, we support families and students from age zero to 21. And parents as teachers is where they start, and Angela talked a little bit about that, where zero to five, that group of educators are going into homes and working with families to get them connected to education and to the district. And then all the way through to our transition students who can stay on with who can stay on with the 18-plus team and, you know, enhance and engage, learn their independent living skills. And then everything in between, right? We have early college, high school, and virtual learning, and New Hope High School. We have so many ways that our students can learn. And so with that, there's different ways our families can engage and our business community. And, who's this guy? And that's the next slide. It was, it's not as scary as the big tree. The tree scared me, but I really wasn't sure what to do with that. This is like a really small snapshot, but, you know, Christina talked at the very beginning about the goal of all of this is to impact our students. And there are, it takes a village to impact our students in a meaningful way. And that is, a big part of that is our families and our business community. And a lot of our business community are our families. And a big role for LEAF, the Leander Education Foundation, is working with those business community. And our relationship with the districts allows us to grow that, those partnerships. And one of the things that we're doing is starting to, you know, we used to have in convocation, the big in-person event with all the business vendors. And the business community misses that. And so we're looking at opportunities with events that are already happening and how we can bring those business partners into the district and engage them with our families. They have resources our students need. And then also, the other piece of the family engagement is getting them more involved with programs on campus. And there's some of them here. Incubator is a small part of the overall CTE curriculum or the CTE program. I think of them as the tracks that I knew from college, but now they have them at high school. And here we have culinary and cosmetology and automotive. And I think Leander just launched an HVAC and on and on and on. Amazing opportunities for our students, but we need families engaged and participating. And talked a little about Parents of Teachers, the district events, work-based learning, and then our chambers. I mean, we have three chambers in our huge school district and engaging with them, working with them to bring them involved and how there's opportunities available to engage our families that way. And I was trying to think if I missed anything else. I don't think so, but being such a large, not only a large district, but a, a unique and different district with the programs that we give our students, I think there's a lot of different ways we can engage our families. And like Christina talked about, that's what we're looking at from the communication side. So I think that was all I had on my side. Your last?
All right. So there we go. Looking forward, what's next? As Angela had mentioned, we are going to dig deeper into our campus family engagement. We are so excited about this new opportunity with CTE, with a newly created position for work-based learning coordinator who compares students with businesses for on-the-job training. And so our hope is that our community relations team can help play a vital role and along with LEAF to find businesses and corporations to partner with. In terms of creating new and diverse audiences, this has been so exciting. Our Chief of D E I, Duane Street, in partnership with SCR, has created a D E I podcast cleverly named on this street. So last year, Duane was, contributed to these news articles, which also included a lot of education as, as an educational resource for our staff. But he also included some great interviews with, with our staff, who, in celebrating the diversity of our district. Now, we are able to capture those interviews and put them in audio form and in a different platform, reaching a completely different audience. It has just been a lot of fun. And we're only on our second episode and I'm having a blast with it. I guess I'm just excited because of the possibilities that we have, not just with this podcast, but also with the idea, I mean, of student involvement. Oh my goodness, chills, right? So there's a lot of excitement around that. And again, for us, SCR and our strategies, we are just constantly looking at ways that we are, where, where we can, we can look across at what's happening in the district and be supportive of that. So for example, even just this morning, talking about our culture of voting and that resolution and what kind of strategies we can build around that, creating more education about how these issues impact our parents and our students, it has become even more vitally important. Taking a look at what we're doing with laying the groundwork, even just creating more awareness around a district, our, our district police force and what that's going to look like. I think that that can, that, building awareness around that and what that might look like, strategically, we can lay some foundation for that. And, and again, as, as Bruce had mentioned with, in the superintendent report, the work that we're doing with our bond website and again, creating signage and material and just awareness and fluency around your bond dollars at work is vitally important for our district to understand the connection between public schools and, and, and the community at large. So what we have learned is that this goal in particular is a lot of cross-functionality with every other goal. Equitable access, safe and innovative learning environments, empowered staff, and of course, empowered student learning. And so with that, we're hoping that that collaboration and keeping that impactful family engagement in mind will help elevate our efforts in, in that, in those different areas. Any questions?
I just have a comment. So on slide 10, I just want to point out, we, we have a picture of a PTA. I just want to make note that Glenn has beat LHS for the last three years. And I love that you posted that picture. I appreciate that. But my real question is, what I, what I love about this slide, though, is I know as an ex-PTA president, is how important that relationship with the PTA and our district and our school campuses. And I really feel like y'all have done a great job at really trying to build that bridge and really build those relationships up because we're seeing it. We're seeing how high the memberships are at the PTA. And I mean, that, that's a collaborative effort. I mean, it's area superintendents who are, you know, supporting their principals. Principals understanding the value of having their families on campus. So as a parent who has kids all over the district, I see it and I really, really appreciate the emphasis on getting parents back into the classroom. Thank you.
And I just want to say that when we say PTA, we lovingly include PTOs under that umbrella.
On, on slide eight, when you talked about the impactful family engagement, I love how you brought out just the long-range plan and how that's an example of, of really listening to the community. I would say our recent zoning discussions is another example of listening to that community. But I love how, you know, you drew out the fact of there's a committee and the committee is actually kind of going through some iterations, right? We just worked on charters. We're saying, how do we do this better? How do we form these impactful comments with each other, being intentional? And I see this committee feeling empowered. I love the work that's being done here. And I, I hope to see that kind of reflected in, in some of our other committees where, where we're trying to get at, like, how do you know you were impactful in that committee? How do you know that your recommendations, the SHAC recommendations, the dashboard we're going to do? How do we know that these recommendations continue to go forward? And so I'm really excited to see that work continue. And I just thank y'all so much because some of this has been diving off into a deep end. You don't really know exactly what this looks like. You are definitely taking some steps into an unknown. But it has been interesting seeing this process kind of come, come forward. And then on the next slide on, or was it? See, I should have had my glasses on. That's my problem here. I think it was...
Was it the trees slide?
Oh, oh yeah. The impactful family engagement slide number 10. Not for the same reasons Anna likes to look at that slide, but we'll go back there because she likes that anyway. But I love this discussion of how can parents be involved on campus, but also respect that campus also has not only security, but it's a learning environment. They're, they're trying to manage a lot of features as well. And so how do we balance these two things? I see elementary school being kind of an easy level entrance here. Watchdogs are on campuses, right? I know this wasn't going to cover everything. I was just giving a snapshot. But, but when you get to middle school and high school, it seems like those opportunities wane. So I'm going to be interested in seeing like, how do these, how do we do this for middle school and high school for that parent engagement? I know boosters are a great example, definitely. Band mom, you get very involved. Before that, my daughter was in theater, so I got to be involved with the theater boosters. But for parents who aren't able to participate in boosters, what are there other ways? So I'm excited to see y'all continue, continue to develop those and see how that kind of interaction works on campus. And then finally, I wanted to just go back to the slide on where you talked about all the different communities coming together on slide 14. I really, really appreciate, and, and again, this is just a snapshot. You talk about faith-based organization, parents, teachers, chambers of commerce. We need all of our community together, working to support our kiddos in these communities. And, and we really have seen some of that come together this year. I'm really looking forward because I'm seeing our chambers get engaged and active. And especially when we talk about that workforce CTE component that we're building out, I am so excited to see where this is going to go. So please keep us updated in Friday Mimos because I cannot wait to see how this is going to blossom. I think this will be amazing for our community. And I'm so happy to see our chambers at the forefront of some of these discussions.
I just had to piggyback off your chamber thing. What I love that we're seeing, that direct involvement, we had one of our chambers come out and say they're against vouchers because they believe in the public schools and Leander ISD. And so I, I just feel like there's some collaboration there, relationship building. So I appreciate y'all taking that initiative because it's true. They realize the power of our public schools and Leander ISD. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break right now. And so it is 7:52. We will be back here at 8:02.
And then increase a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of the one-time payment, actually comes out of the food service fund for our food service staff. So that's the, kind of the highlights, if you will, of the budget amendments, a little lengthier than probably the normal. So I just wanted to spend some time just to walk through it for you. If you have any questions.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the budget transfers and amendments to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget as presented.
I second. Trish makes a motion and a sentence. Any discussion? All those in favor? Six in favor, motion passes. Trustee, got the, did I? Oh, okay, yep. All right, we're going to move over to seven C two, business and finance monthly reports.
Yeah, the next five items, we have some, just our normal monthly reports. I've got one or two comments, nothing really in-depth on any of them, I just want to hit a couple high notes. The first one is the, we have given you the annual cash flow. We did that back at the beginning of the fiscal year. Also, that is included as well. I've also given you an updated annual cash flow with actual amounts for the first quarter for July, September, sorry, there's a month between there. July, August, and September. So those columns have been updated with actual amounts and those will continue to be done in a quarterly fashion. The monthly bond status report, nothing out of the ordinary. The bond is continuing, projects are going, things are starting to come together, P O's are being issued. Monthly investment report, we earned about one point six million dollars this past, in the month of October for these reports. Just under one million dollars out of the capital projects fund, which are the bond proceeds. Just over six hundred and fifty thousand for the general fund and interest. And then our monthly tax collection report, we are, we have ninety-six point nine-nine percent of where we were at last year. Just under ninety, ninety-six point, yeah, just under ninety-seven percent of what we had collected at this point last year. Don't get real excited about the ninety-seven, because really, you know, there's not a whole lot that happens in September and October. Most of our tax revenue will hit November, December, and January. And then we'll have a real, a better idea of exactly where we are based on our budget. We don't expect it to be anything far off. We still expect a nine-nine percent collection rate. But other than that, that's kind of the highlights of the reports. If there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer those.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board, it is eight twenty-one. And the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by Texas Government Code's five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privilege matter. Texas Government Code five-five-one-zero-seven-four, personnel deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two-one, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed. No action will be taken in closed session. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session.